I'd like to call the November 17th, 2025 city council meeting to order. If you can stand and if you have a hat, please remove it for the pledge.
Aye.
The legislative flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
See, we have our city treasurer with us tonight, Mr. Hershey. Thank you for attending. Mr. Mauser, if you would, please roll call.
Yes, sir. Rosenberg.
Present.
Mylar.
Here.
Lots.
Here.
Stoffel.
Here.
Carney.
Here.
Phoney.
Here.
Roach.
Here.
Newcomb.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Blackburn.
Here.
Vorse.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Hartsman.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Bullhouse.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to 1.4, approval of the minutes from November 3rd, 2025. Need a motion to approve?
We've got a motion over here.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion or comments on the minutes from November 3rd, 2025?
We have a motion, we have a second.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do not have public hearing tonight. We do not have any city presentations, so we will move on to number four. Public comments. This portion of the city council meeting is reserved for any member of the public wishing to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120/1 mandates no action shall be taken on matters not listed on this agenda. The council may direct staff to address the topic or refer the matter to a committee. Please provide the city clerk with your name, speak into the microphone, limit your presentation to five minutes, and avoid repetitious comments. Thank you. Do we have anybody that would like to make public comments at this time?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Kraft Shealy, and I'm from Ward 3. And I'm here tonight to ask the city council to please pause before committing to continuing its subscription to Placer AI. This is the first time this issue has come before you all for a formal vote. It's been used over the past year. And when a tool collects data about people's movements and personal data, folks have a right to weigh in on whether taxpayer funding should be used to go toward that tool. And I want to be clear that I actually fully understand the benefits of this proposed tool. I find many of them appealing, but that does not eliminate our responsibility to scrutinize the risks, and the risks of this technology are real. The kind of location data that Placer AI relies on can reveal people's movements and associations. This is well documented, and government use of any type of surveillance technology carries heightened obligations. Citizens deserve clear limitations on purposes, strict controls on access and retention, transparency about how data is used and repackaged, redisclosed, and above all safeguards to prevent use beyond what has been publicly promised. And to this point, those policies and guardrails have never been articulated at all for the use of this tool. And without that foundation, no member of the public can feel adequately informed or protected. And the way this data is collected by Placer AI matters and is important to scrutinize. Companies like Placer AI piggyback off of apps that people are using for completely unrelated reasons without adequate notice that they're going to be used and their data's going to be sucked up and repurposed and monetized. And that's not a practice that we should be funding. It requires technological savvy to even understand that it's happening, let alone disable it. And it's worrisome to imagine the city relying on data that was gathered without citizens' informed consent. Public institutions have a much higher standard than that to meet. And it is true, and I've heard this, that this technology has become widespread, but that alone does not make these practices appropriate. In fact, our technology tends to evolve ahead of our privacy laws. And I am a lawyer who spends time in civil liberties spaces and in national legal spaces, and I'm very aware of the real risks of misuse of this data and the way that it is very challenging for citizens to identify misuse once it occurs. And so, given all of that, and also I wanted to mention, Placer AI has been the subject of multiple congressional inquiries into how its data is collected, into whether and how it can be re-identified. They represent that it cannot, but that has not been made clear. It's not third-party audited. There doesn't seem to be a way to definitively establish how protected their data is, if at all. And a lot of the questions that the US Congress has asked them have gone unanswered. And so, this company itself deserves a lot of scrutiny. This is a serious matter, and I hope you all will treat it with seriousness, because once tech like this is implemented, it's extremely hard to roll back. And so, what I'm asking you all to consider is to actually engage with the community about what the community wishes to have in terms of surveillance technology at all, what trade-offs we'd like to make with our civil liberties and privacy. And based on that conversation, then make decisions about particular technologies through that lens, because to date, I don't know that community members have ever had an opportunity to weigh in onto the extent to wish we wish to be surveilled. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else that would like to make public comments this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Doug Gaines of Ward 5. Last council meeting, I was up here asking for a resolution on election integrity, not seeing one on the agenda this evening. I took the liberty to go ahead and draft one for the council's consideration. I'd like to read it to you now and then also drop off a hard copy with clerk, and then I'll send some soft copy via email later. So, here we go. Resolution urging St. Clair County adoption hand-counted paper ballots to ensure transparency, security, and integrity for all future elections. Whereas, over two centuries ago, we, the people of Illinois, did join these United States in 1818 and ordain and establish a constitution for securing certain inherent and inalienable rights not to be denied or infringed by the state or any subdivision thereof. Whereas, the city of O'Fallon is a home rural municipality under the Illinois Constitution with authority to adopt resolutions promoting public health, safety, morale, the welfare of its citizens, including the authority to advocate for election integrity. Whereas, the city of O'Fallon municipal code empowers the city council to adopt resolutions expressing the city's position on matters of public concern, including those affecting countywide services such as elections. Whereas, the Illinois Constitution guarantees free and equal elections. Nothing is more vital to our republic than transparent, verifiable elections owned by we, the people, not private vendors or electronic voting machines. Whereas, we, the people, have no proof our public servants were elected by consent of the governed due to secretive, unverifiable electronic voting systems in St. Clair County. Whereas, system experts and whistleblowers sworn testimony reveals internal flaws, all voting machines allowing undetected vote shifts, erasing logs and foreign linked access, violating Illinois law and constitutional mandate. Whereas, a secretive, unaccountable process of conducting elections has been instituted, constituting a subversion of Illinois' constitution, our rights, and our elections in violation of the Illinois Election Code's mandate for fair and open elections. Whereas, government at the state and county levels is no longer serving the primary interest of we, the people, for which it was instituted, contrary to oaths of office. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of O'Fallon, Illinois. We support hand-counted paper ballots to preserve the rights of our citizens and return consent to the governed. As handcounts are unhackable, fully observable, and legally supported for audits and recounts, we urge the immediate transition by St. Clair County to hand-counted paper ballots for all elections, eliminating all electronic voting machines and tabulators to ensure full compliance with Illinois Constitution and the United States Constitution and the Illinois Election Code. We urge the county clerk to adopt a hand-count mandate by March 15, 2026, conduct public observable handcounts in all future elections, limit voting to one day with minimal mail in ballots to preserve audit logs, hand audit at least 10% of precincts post-elections. This council shall forward this resolution to the St. Clair County Board Chair, County Clerk, State Board of Elections, and the Illinois General Assembly members representing St. Clair County and the US Congressional Representatives for the 12th and 13th District, calling for immediate action and support. The city clerk shall publicize this resolution through the city's website, local media, and community notices to encourage O'Fallon citizens to contact county officials and advocacy, exercising their rights under the Illinois Constitution and Freedom of Information Act to demand transparency. This resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, passed on, insert date and month, 2025, we hope. By the vote, insert vote tally in favor, insert vote tally opposed. Attest, Mr. Mauser, City Clerk. Approve, Mr. Van Hook, Mayor. So, thank you for your time and serious consideration of this much-needed resolution for our election integrity. I'd like to drop off a copy with the clerk over here, if possible, sir. I wish you all a blessed Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else that would like to make public comments this evening?
Vern Muller, Ward 3. Just a notation for looking at the warrant report, number 571. We're looking to pay out $1,363,348.5. Just a few noted items I noticed on there. You're buying, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it was planned to be on the budget or whatever, but I just was wanting to know on the gear that you're buying for the fire department, I believe 13 uniforms for gear that they wear, it's like $47,804. I know we're paying Howin another $61,665 and change. And then we have a landscaping structure for the amphitheater. I was at $112,413. I don't remember seeing that budgeted. I know it's probably going to be tallied up on the total completion pending your amount of the work done at the park, hopefully. And made my way, $13,178. And then you paid for July, August, September, Muni Outdoor Services for things done around Just a few items I've come up with, and I'll have further comments at the second portion of public opinions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else this evening that would like to make public comments?
Ron Talmes, Ward 6. I apologize for not being able to make the last couple of meetings out of town, but I still do oppose your vote tonight, your second reading, on changing the residential requirements for the city administrator. I really do believe that the chief operating officer for the city, highest-paid person in this city ought to live within the city limits. That being said, it begs another question, and it was a question I did ask in an email. I don't know what the answers are. Is this a reactionary to, you know, not getting the resumes that you were looking for? I went on the city's website today. I see nothing posted for the city administrator for the vacancy. So, I don't know if at some point, maybe tonight, it's not the time to speak to it. I don't know what you can speak to, but where is the city in the process in terms of hiring the next city administrator? And whether or not there's a headhunter being done for that, or whether we're just doing that locally, you know, just how wide a net is being cast? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else have public comments that they would like to make this evening? Seeing none, we'll close our first public comments section. We will move on to 5, the clerk's report.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to number 6, the mayor's report. And Mr. Vorse, would you be willing to do 6.1 for us?
I recommend the appointment of David Kozad to the planning commission for a three-year term, expire November 17, 2028.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Kozad's resume was attached. Does anyone have any questions or comments on 6.1? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mylar.
Yes.
Lots.
Yes.
Stoffel.
Yes.
Carney.
Yes.
Phoney.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
Newcomb.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Blackburn.
Yes.
Vorse.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hartsman.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Rosenberg. Affirmative.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 6.2, we have our annual Thanksgiving Vine Street Market, November 22, 2025, from 9:00 AM until noon. We have our St. Jude's Charity Christmas Tree Lot at 200 South Lincoln. That will be in service from November 28 through December 23. We have our O'Fallon Illuminated Holiday Parade on November 29. On the agenda, it says 5:00 PM. That's been corrected to 6:00 PM, so the parade will begin at 6:00 PM. I do want to let everybody know this evening that we will be going into executive session to discuss sale and acquisition of property as well as personnel. And I would like to also remind everybody that City Hall will be closed on Thanksgiving and the Friday following. And when we come out of executive session, we will not be voting on anything. We'll move on to resolutions. 7.1, Mr. Vorse, please.
I'd like to make a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of O'Fallon and Placer Labs Incorporated for a yearly subscription to Placer AI for foot traffic and visitation analytics.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any comments or conversation on 7.1?
Yes, sir. I'm going to vote yes on this, but I believe we need to see this contract. We have not visually seen what we're voting on, really and truly. And transparency is something I want us to look into. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Carney. Does anyone else have any comments this evening?
I usually try not to get so reactionary to one person's statements, but just with a simple tweak of a Google search, I saw some things that were a little bit concerning, such as heat maps of people that have visited, like an abortion clinic, for example. They got themselves into a lawsuit in the past, of course, so I think it deserves a little bit more attention and eyes on it than I've considered before.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Blackburn. Does anyone else?
Yeah. Can you speak, can we answer to whether any identifying information? I understand how it tracks. I'm a cybersecurity guy, and I've looked at some of their information, but does the city retain, or is there any individual identifying information that is part of the collection?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, we did receive some questions over the last week, and in addition, we've received a couple Freedom of Information Act requests regarding this. And we've reached out to Placer Labs and Placer AI. So, all the data we receive is aggregate data based on subgroup analytics. So, they look and see, based upon a lot of cell phone usage, Facebook, other social media sites, it gives us a package of basically already driven down data that says there were 6,000 people at the sports park on this day, and afterwards, they went shop, or they went to Fairview Heights to, Raising Canes was a large one, or Chick-fil-A. We use that data for kind of traffic inflow and outflow. We use it for event planning, to try to estimate attendance numbers. We do other things with grant writings and input, and especially on like our CMAC grants that talk about traffic circulation. At no time do we ever see actual specific data, including names or identifying characteristics as age or anything. And a lot of this data, how they package it, is through social media apps and your cell phone usage. So, even if the city of O'Fallon, this council, didn't wish to move forward with having this data presented to us, the data is still collected nonetheless, and still packaged and sold. It's, you know, it is monetized. We have used this now with Placer AI for one year. We find it valuable. But we've also used it years previous with the Retail Coach in Buxton. So, this is not a new approach we've been using. Buxton and Retail Coach both use the same data provided by Placer AI. They just package it in a little bit different look and feel and charge you a little bit extra. This time, we chose to kind of go straight to the source and train some staff how to read this, this packaged data itself. Again, it just allows us to kind of look at it in real time. With the other services we've used in the past, it's we pay them, they use the same data, and they give us a report, and they're done. And so, I hope that answered your question. There is a quite lengthy contract agreement. This is amendment you're voting on this year due to the second year and the increased price. But on their website, they do have a lot of information on the data and how they package it. At no time does it provide us with any details on any minor or juvenile children. And at no time, and Chief Wiggeman can speak to this, is it used for any type of law enforcement practice or enforcement of laws.
So, if I can add a comment, Mr. Mayor. So, for the city council, there's no individual identifying information. They couldn't track Ross Rosenberg by the information that they're getting, where I've gone, where I've been, how long I've been there. They just get a number. And so, they could say 14 council, not council members, because that's by individual, but they could say 14 people went to the sports park or went to wherever. And that's the information that they're getting. There's no way that they can track individuals, but at least not at our level. Whether they could do it or not, that's not what we're getting. That's not what we're agreeing to.
Right. And my understanding is if they are doing that, we do not have any access to any data of that nature.
You know, if anybody, we provide you guys with data and analytics in a packaged form. Anytime if anybody wants to see the actual program in action, we welcome you to come in, meet with one of us. Andrew and Greg are both well-trained in it, and they'd be glad to sit down with you and show you what it actually produces for us.
I'll just note, I'm not going to support it tonight. I just want a little bit more time to review it, but I'm sure it'll pass, who knows?
Does anybody else have any comments or questions on 7.2?
7.1.
I'm sorry, 7.1. If seeing none, we'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Okay. Lots.
Yes.
Stoffel.
Yes.
Carney.
No.
Phoney.
No.
Roach.
Yes.
Newcomb.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Blackburn.
No.
Vorse.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hartsman.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Rosenberg. Affirmative. Mylar.
Yes.
Who knows?
Okay, motion carries. Now, we will move on to 7.2, and again, Mr. Vorse, please.
I'd like to pass a, or make a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Millennium Professional Services for design, plan, administration, and construction coordination of the Family Sports Park Soccer Fields 9 and 10 turf project.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any discussion on 7.2?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just.
Sure.
During the committee meeting, I had mentioned, or I guess Andrew had mentioned, that we're going to paint these fields, or they're going to be displayed in a way that we can use them for other sports, which I had mentioned my son playing on fields up in Des Moines, which is actually the Grimes Iowa one that we were provided pictures of. And since this is a resolution, it won't come before the committee. Again, I just wanted to say, in those particular fields in Grimes, the whole park is actually sponsored by Hy-Vee. And so, I just wanted to put that out there in a sense that when we have large developers coming, businesses, that maybe the city looks toward partnering with them or getting them in touch with the schools or something, if they're coming to our community, that maybe they could also have a tie, much like these Hy-Vee fields in Grimes, so.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any additional comments on 7.2? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Stoffel.
Yes.
Carney.
Yes.
Phoney.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
Newcomb.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Blackburn.
Yes.
Vorse.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hartsman.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Rosenberg. Affirmative. Mylar.
Yes.
Lots.
Yes.
Stoffel.
Yes.
Carney.
Yes.
Blackburn.
No.
Did I miss something? Okay.
Thank you, motion carries. We only have one ordinance for first reading this evening, 8.1. Mrs. Lots, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we consider on first reading an ordinance amending ordinance 623 zoning of the city of O'Fallon, Illinois, development known as Club Fitness, located at 1234 Central Park.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any comments or discussion on 8.1?
Seeing none, roll call, please. Thank you, motion carries. Our final resolution tonight, 7.4. Mrs. Lots, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a redevelopment agreement with ALWA Properties for 200 South Lincoln Avenue, O'Fallon, Illinois.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any discussion or comments on 7.4? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Phoney.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
Newcomb.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Vorse.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Blackburn.
Yes.
Hartsman.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Rosenberg. Affirmative. Mylar.
Yes.
Lots.
Yes.
Stoffel.
Yes.
Carney.
Yes.
Blackburn.
No.
Did I miss something? Okay.
Thank you, motion carries. We only have one ordinance for first reading this evening, 8.1. Mrs. Lots, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we consider on first reading an ordinance amending ordinance 623 zoning of the city of O'Fallon, Illinois, development known as Club Fitness, located at 1234 Central Park.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any comments or discussion on 8.1? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Roach.
Yes.
Newcomb.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Blackburn.
Yes.
Vorse.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hartsman.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Rosenberg. Affirmative. Mylar.
Yes.
Lots.
Yes.
Stoffel.
Yes.
Carney.
Yes.
Blackburn.
No.
Did I miss something?
Thank you, motion carries. We only have one ordinance for first reading this evening, 8.1. Mrs. Lots, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we consider on first reading an ordinance amending ordinance 623 zoning of the city of O'Fallon, Illinois, development known as Club Fitness, located at 1234 Central Park.
Second.
Thank you, motion carries. We will move on to ordinances for second reading, 9.1, Mr. Parchman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to consider on second reading, an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 31, City Officers.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any comments or discussion on 9.1? Roll call.
Newcomb?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Blackburn?
Yes.
Vorse?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Parchman?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Affirmative.
Mylar?
Yes.
Lots?
Yes.
Stoffel?
Yes.
Carney?
Yes.
Phoney?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will move on to 9.2, Mrs. Lots, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve on second reading, an ordinance amending Ordinance 623, zoning districts of the City of O'Fallon, Illinois, development known as Aloha Pools, located at 105 Auto Court.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any discussion or comments on 9.2? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hudson?
Yes.
Blackburn?
Yes.
Vorse?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Parchman?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Affirmative.
Mylar?
Yes.
Lots?
Yes.
Stoffel?
Yes.
Carney?
Yes.
Phoney?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Newcomb?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. We will move on to 9.3, Mrs. Lots, please.
I'm going to read the whole thing. I move that we approve on second reading, an ordinance adopting the 2021 International Building Code, the 2021 International Fire Code, the 2021 International Mechanical Code, the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, the 2021 International Residential Code, the 2021 International Existing Building Code, the 2021 International Fuel Gas Code, the 2021 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, the Illinois Energy Conservation Code, the 2020 National Electrical Code, the Illinois Plumbing Code, and the Illinois ADA Code.
Second, as written.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any discussion or comments on 9.3? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Blackburn?
Yes.
Vorse?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Parchman?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Affirmative.
Mylar?
Yes.
Lots?
Yes.
Stoffel?
Yes.
Carney?
Yes.
Phoney?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Newcomb?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Our final ordinance for second reading tonight, 9.4, Mrs. Lots, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve on second reading, an ordinance regulating development in floodplain areas.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any discussion or comments on 9.4? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vorse?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Parchman?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Affirmative.
Mylar?
Yes.
Lots?
Yes.
Stoffel?
Yes.
Carney?
Yes.
Phoney?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Newcomb?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Blackburn?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Okay, this portion of the meeting, we will move on to Section 10, 10.1, Additional Public Comments. I'm not going to read the instructions that we read the first time, but those rules still do apply. So, does anyone, would anyone like to make any additional public comments this evening?
Vern Mular, Ward 3. Just a review of a couple of things I've had on my list here. It's been forever, and nothing's been taking place on it. The painting, the stripings down the streets, it's very difficult. If it's raining out there, you can't even find out where the middle of the road is. And of course, we don't have to worry about the ice cream store now, because it's coming in the wintertime, so they haven't got their light yet. And of course, the light up on South Lincoln has still not been replaced. Also, my comments on the sidewalk for the Seven Hills Road has gone awry, plus a stop sign on Vincennes until we have a memorial sign out there saying who somebody got killed in regard for that. Statistically, it's eventually going to happen, so just on that note. On the IMFA thing that the alderman went to Chicago, I need a little help. Where you found the reports at on that was supposed to be given tied into some other report? Maybe Sandy could maybe show me where to find it. I looked all over the place, I couldn't find where I could find the notes on that. And then, final point, I've, you know, heard rumors, whatever and whatever, and I'm just trying to figure out if it's going to come from the deists up there in regards to, is there going to be a City Fest or not anymore? That's just my question, because there's been announcements made to different places about it, and different things said on the, those Facebook pages or whatever you have. I have no idea, because I don't get involved in those, because if I would, I'd get kicked out. So, that's why I don't get involved with it. So, just my question to ask the deists up here, is it, what's status, and if we're going to hear it from that? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any additional public comments this evening? Seeing none, we will close that off, and we will move on to Item 11, Staff and Council Member Comments, 11.1. And I will ask that you please state your name and what ward you are with, if you have any questions or comments tonight. Grant, you will start.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a few answers for tonight. We already discussed the Placer AI. Again, I welcome anybody, if you wish to see kind of what we see, we'd be glad to show you guys. It's a powerful tool we find, and main uses to report back to you guys on what we're doing and make great decisions. We, regarding the IML reports, they were included in the Finance Administration Committee meeting minutes, and so, if you go under for next meeting, when those draft meetings are posted, but they're also on tonight's agenda, or the week, two weeks ago, on the draft meeting agenda, I'll be sure to print a copy of that and have it available. And lastly, we have a discussion about fire department gear. Chief White did tell me that we had five more walk-in volunteer firefighters come in just last Tuesday at their training. We are at the highest number of volunteer firefighters in history that we can count. It's a great testament to keeping that fire department with great volunteers. But with volunteers, they also have to be outfitted, and anything with fire or painted red becomes expensive, and so, all of their bunker gear is outfitted for them, and it is extremely expensive. Chief White has been looking at alternatives, especially with fire engines. I did inform the council two weeks ago that we are looking at replacement of a larger fire engine with a smaller version that can be a little bit quicker to get out to accidents and get through traffic, and there are considerable savings. We do have a lot of appreciation for Chief White. He is a very creative and, dare I say, frugal police chief, and he does try to find a way to pinch fire chief, and he does try to find a good way to pinch a penny, so. With that, I can turn it over to Sandy, if we have any more comments.
Yes, thank you. Yes, just to clarify what you said, it is under November 3rd council meeting, 16.1, you'll see the draft of the finance minutes, and then, there's an attachment for the IML listing. You already addressed the turnout gear, which is always budgeted every year. The pavilion, the 112,000, that was Andrews at the sport, or at the community park. That was the one that he replaced the three individual pavilions. This is a large pavilion. The invoice just came in a little late. And then, the maids my way, that's just our monthly cleaning, so there's no difference on that. In Holland, that was their final payment.
And then, the muni outdoor services was for the contracted mowing, which we mow, which they mow 52 sites throughout town, and they did some landscaping work in June as well for us.
And to get Vern to answer your question, we did meet recently with the City Fest Committee, and it was basically a meeting where we did a strategic review of City Fest, the events that happened. We expressed the concerns that we continue to have, and it was after we presented our information and told them that City Fest would not continue in its current state, but it didn't preclude anybody. If they wanted to try and present something else, they could. They met without any city staff, other than our finance director, Sandy Evans, because the city does, they basically do all of the fundraising, the city does all the mailers, and the city runs all the finance that is attributed through City Fest. So, Sandy needed to be in there to, they were finalizing some of the reports for this year, and at that, during that conversation, there was almost unanimous support that City Fest would not take place next year. And we'll look, we do have opportunities, we have the 250th anniversary of this great country, and we're going to start looking at what some type of celebration would look like for that. And we do feel very fortunate that before, we had, when we started City Fest, we didn't have downtown district nights, we didn't have the amphitheater, we, the market's thriving. We really feel that, you know, the past administration and council and our leadership team worked, works really hard to provide community engagement opportunities. So, that is very important for us, but as I said in a press release after City Fest, nostalgia can never outweigh public safety, and that's where, that's where we were at.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I just wanted to answer the question about the sidewalk on Seven Hills Road at our last committee meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, at our last council meeting, the engineering agreement that we did for the Deer Creek drainage issues, I believe the sidewalk is included in that, and I think that might be the question you were asking about. Am I, I'm correct, right?
I believe so. The sidewalk needs to be continuous, you shouldn't have to cross the street, and go down here, and then cross it back. There's all kinds of rumors how that came about, but all we know is that will be addressed when we handle that project.
Does anybody else, any of our council members, have any comments this evening?
Todd Roach, Ward 4. I was just curious, what were the limitations that would have had to be put on this event or any other event going forward?
Limitations that we talked about, single-day event, we were looking at events that wouldn't go into the evening. Again, the troubles we had on Saturday night started before the sun even went down, and it just becomes a continual challenge for public safety, and we received letters from citizens that live around the park, that one particularly, that we know, said she has never felt more afraid to live in the City of O'Fallon than she did that night. And so, when we look at things, we looked at some of the things that are successful. We'd love to have an event with a parade, we talked about that. They do an amazing job. Marcy does a great job with putting the parade together. There's a lot of good things out there with the food, a lot of the nonprofits that cook out there. So, we're still looking, it's all a little bit fresh, and we do have the other celebration coming next year, so that may take the place of that. But, as I, we told that group, anything that they submit is going to go through a stringent public safety review, and it's not just O'Fallon, that's the sad part about it. We're just one of many communities that unfortunately has not been able to have an event that doesn't attract a lot of outside attention, and in the way City Fest has ended the last several years.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. 12, Community Development, Mrs. Lots, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet last week. The draft minutes are attached for review. We have one item requiring council action, and that is 12.2. So, I move that we approve the special event permit request for the Crusaders of St. Jude Charity Christmas tree lot.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any discussion or comments on 12.2? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Parchman?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Affirmative.
Mylar?
Yes.
Lots?
Yes.
Stoffel?
Yes.
Carney?
Yes.
Phoney?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Newcomb?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Blackburn?
Yes.
Vorse?
Yes.
I also want to mention that we will likely not be meeting for community development next week, but there are two upcoming planning commission meetings that will be on the 25th, and then, on December 9th. And those are at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Moving on, Number 13, we have Public Works, Mr. Rosenberg, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have not met since our last city council meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled tentatively for next Monday at 7:00. Check the website in case the times change.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14, we will move on to Public Safety, Mr. Blackburn, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have not met since the last council meeting. The November 10th meeting was canceled, and the next meeting is December 8th at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 15, Mr. Vorse, please, Parks and Environment.
The Parks and Environment Committee met on December 10th, and the draft minutes are attached, and we've taken care of all the business that needed to be taken care of by the council. Our next meeting is December 10th, or, yeah, 8th, I'm sorry, 8th. Check the website for details.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 16, Reports, Finance Administration, Mr. Parchman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting will